In a letter to the Commissioner's State February 13th, 2025, and reading as follows. The Honorable Members of the Delta County Board of Commissioners, dear Commissioners, A regular meeting of the Delta County Board of Commissioners is scheduled for Tuesday, February 18th, 2025, at 5:15 PM in the conference room of the Delta County Service Center. Sincerely yours, Nancy Preseraki, Delta County Clerk. Please rise for a word of prayer. Lord, as we begin this meeting, we are thankful for our many blessings. We ask for your guidance to help our Commissioners make decisions in the best interest of the citizens of our county. And, Lord, we pray for the safety of our military men and women. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Melner?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Van Genhoven?
Here.
And Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Hey, thank you, everybody, for coming. Let's see here. Special Orders of Business, Rules and Procedure is number one.
So, everybody got a copy of the rules of procedure that I had turned in, which was just really, literally changes in formatting. There's no real context change. And it was to ensure that we had an accessible document, which means that someone who might be visually impaired could use a reader that could actually read through the document very easily without any sort of mistakes or hiccups along the way because there's formatting issues. So, that was one of the issue, one of the main goals. And then also adding a table of contents so that you could easily get to where you wanted to get to in the document. And then also adding cross-references within the document. So, when you're in a paragraph and it refers somewhere else in the document, if you're in a digital format of that document, you can simply click on it and it'll take you to where you're referencing. So, that's what I have turned in. And so, I entertain any sort of questions that anybody had, but the goal is just to clean up.
Modernizing.
Modernize and clean it up. And then also importantly, make it accessible so that someone who needs to have a reader could function within this document without, with any, with no problem whatsoever.
Okay. If you don't mind. Commissioner Williams, I noticed, was that some changes you made, like different names, and you highlighted things like, hey, do we still have this? Are we addressing that at this time, or are we addressing that later on?
No, thank you very much. That, actually, we do need to deal with. So, when I got the document from Tracy, she had mentioned, you know, hey, there's some names in these committees that may not be right, may need to be corrected. I really would like us to look at those right now and make those corrections. And so, those are like pages 12, 13, 14. You know, it's in that, in that area. And I can let you know which ones were highlighted that were sort of problematic. For instance, let's see, let's start, it'd be page 12. And I'm in the part of the document that has the track changes. Right. So, that's where I am, yeah. So, on page 12, there's an animal control department. I don't think that we have an animal control department, so I would say we would scratch that, that would come off. Do we agree that that's the case? Okay.
As long as we know that, that potentially could come back. Because that's always been kind of a side goal of, hey, we do need animal control, but we need to find funding, and we've just never found that funding.
So, we could maybe just put a parenthesis after it, that's something like, you know, I'm not sure what the right word would be, but...
Like wishlist, basically.
Or just like, you know...
As staffed. Yeah.
Or something like that, or maybe, you know, hiatus or something, whatever.
Sure, sure.
So, okay, I'll figure something out there, then. And so, we'll leave it, but we'll have some kind of a marker that, you know, we're just, it's not active. Or maybe that's what we do, is like, non-active or something.
Yeah.
Okay, so then the next one is on page, let's see, 13. There's a QPAD Criminal Justice Committee. Does that exist?
Not that I know of, I don't...
Not that I'm aware of, but we do have...
I've never seen that.
We do have a new committee that would need to be added on, and that's the Central Upper Peninsula Materials Management Planning Commission.
And that is on there.
Oh, is there?
Yeah, that was already added.
Okay, I apologize.
No, that's okay.
Where is it?
So, QPAD Criminal Justice Committee, I think we could scratch. Okay. And then there's this OEDP QPAD. I don't know what that is either.
Oh, there it is. Okay, yeah.
OEDP. And Tracy wasn't sure either, so...
No, that one I'm not aware of either.
Okay, so I think we could maybe scratch that one. And then there's, on the next page, Landfill Steering Committee and Jail Committee. And I was told that the jail committee was formed when we were building the new facility.
Correct.
And then that, yeah, probably doesn't need to exist anymore.
No, I'd say that's violated.
Until 50 years from now, when we build a new jail, right? Okay. All right, so...
Same with the landfill steering committee. I want to say that was before the landfill authority actually took over.
Okay, so there was probably some authority over it.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll scratch those. So, I think we're good there. And then the only other thing would be on page 16, and it's the Upper Peninsula Committee for Area Progress.
That's up cap.
Is that, we still, so we would, it would put in parentheses "up cap," and then people would know what that is?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, that would be good to do then. Okay.
Oh, and there I see my Upper Peninsula Materials Management.
Yes.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. That's okay. And then, of course, you know, we got rid of committees that have changed, like the Sailors and Soldiers is now the Veterans Affairs Committee, corrected things like the Delta County Park Commission, it's now Park and Rec Commission. So, you know, just cleaning up some of those, those names.
There were a couple I noticed, too. I noticed the County Board of Health and the County Health Department. It should just, as far as I know, it should just be Public Health, Delta Menominee Counties.
Yes.
That's their actual...
Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, so it should be Delta Menominee?
Public Health, Delta Menominee Counties.
Okay. Okay.
And then I've got Michigan Works with an exclamation point. Should be Upper Peninsula Michigan Works. They got rid of the job force, and they got rid of, there's something, there's another tagline behind it, too. It was getting too wordy, so you were right. They, it was Michigan Works, or Upper Peninsula Michigan Works.
Upper Peninsula Michigan Works, okay. And it's spelled out, Upper Peninsula?
Upper Peninsula, yep.
Okay. Not U.P.
And then the Workman's Comp Board is the Michigan Counties Workman's Compensation Fund Board.
Okay, hold on, let me find it. Nope, that's okay. What is it again?
The Michigan Counties Workman's Compensation Fund Board.
Workman's Compensation... Fund Board?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
And then, under the statutory committee, or statutory committees, I was looking at the Board of Public Works.
Which, which page are you on?
Uh, 15.
Yep.
Perfect, thank you, okay.
So, I was looking at our Public Works Department. I don't believe that we really have anything called Public Works. Oh.
Mm-mm.
Okay.
Not that I'm aware of.
Is that, is that true, Ashley? We're good there? We scratched that? Delta County Board of Public Works. I agree with you. I don't know of any, yeah, anything that's Public Works.
Um, I don't believe we have anything regarding Public Works.
Okay, so we'll scratch Delta County Board of Public Works.
Yeah, we have one dream.
Okay.
And then on page 16?
Yeah.
Number 17, the Sixth County Consortium for Employment and Training?
Yeah.
I believe that was, that was like six years ago, seven years ago? Well, no, almost eight years ago. That, that was in existence. I don't believe it's in existence anymore. I think Michigan Works, the 15 counties swallowed that up.
Okay. So, we would also scratch 16 County Consortium for Employment and Training. Everybody's good with that?
Six county.
Six county.
Did I, what did I say?
16.
Oh, 16, sorry.
On page 16. And I believe that's all I recognized.
Okay. Anybody else have anything?
For the work, for the workers?
Compensation?
Mm-hmm.
What did we say that word?
Michigan, Michigan County Workman's Compensation Fund Board.
Is it the Michigan Counties?
Association of Counties?
That's not how they have it listed, no.
Really?
Yep.
Oh, that's interesting.
Michigan County, Michigan Counties Workman's Compensation Fund Board.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And it's, and it's not just Michigan Counties. Cities are in it, different municipalities are in it. So, it's, it's kind of misleading, but that's the name they've had since Delta County helped its inception way back when.
Okay, okay. All right, anything else?
Did we get clarification on that Public Works?
Yeah.
Here, double check.
I was looking at...
Oh, I thought she already said it. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was looking at the County Board of Health, but I see it's under Humans, I was thinking of the Human Services Board, but that's identified elsewhere.
Okay.
Oh, Public Works, there's no, then, okay, sorry.
Okay, so I can make those changes, and then if there's nothing else, then what we would do is ingest all of these track changes, and then we would just have a new set of rules of procedure that are basically the same with the committees changed or fixed, with an additional table of contents, and then a digital, it would be a digital format as well, so that you can easily use it in a digital setting, so...
Do we, are we, and so we're satisfied with the procedural rules? We're not making any changes in those?
There's nothing being changed. What do you mean procedural?
Well, just like, we're following Roberts' Rules of Order, or the, the board will be governed by Roberts' Rules of Order.
Yeah, there's definitely things that need, that's like the next step, because there's like some duplicates, like we say we're following Roberts' Rules a couple of times, and, you know? And it should be like, we loosely follow them, you know?
It kind of depends on the chair.
Yeah. So, that would be like the next step. But this step is just trying to clean it up so that we can then have something that's easier to navigate, so...
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
We don't need a motion or anything on that, because we're, there's going to be more changes, right?
Yeah, there'll be some, you know? Kind of trying to get rid of duplicates and clearing up some of the other.
Okay, we cleaned up some of it. So, we will move on to number five. And approval of the minutes. County Board Meeting on 2/18/25 in the AM. It's today. Yeah. No, that wouldn't be right.
It says today.
They got, they got a couple of things ahead of this here. We go to approval of the agenda, that way we can add them. Set...
For the other minutes?
For the other minutes, yeah. We're gonna have to add them before we can approve them.
What do you want to...
So, at this time, approval of the agenda.
So, I will move approval of the agenda with the additions of number five. Approval of minutes of previous meetings, add county board minutes 2/4/25 and 2/13/25. And then, under subsection X, Committee Reports, I'd like to add 1.5, the Personnel Committee Minutes of 1/30/25, corrected, and then the 2/13/25 minutes.
I'll second, but I think there's a correction on the minutes from 2/13/25 in the, let me see, when we get back to it here.
Well, we're just, we're just amending the agenda to discuss that.
Okay.
When we...
Then, then we'll go back.
Okay. Nope, I just want to make sure we get the corrections in there.
Okay, any other additions or subtractions to the agenda? At this time, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
We didn't.
Passed.
Oh, sorry.
And I was supporting it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Now, we will move back up to approval of the minutes. And we need approval of minutes from County Board Minutes 2/4/25 and 2/13/25.
On 2/13, correct. On 2/13/25, in the... I'll find it here. I believe it was under B number one, there was an amendment to that original motion. And that was for it to go to the prosecutor. If there wasn't a conflict, then it would go right, if there, if there wasn't a conflict, they would hear it. If they thought there was a conflict, it would go then right to MMRME. And then, I do believe Commissioner Melner had a roll call vote for that.
Was there?
No, no, no. That was the last one. Yep, that was on the, 1 on 2/13.
And I would have to listen to the recording to know, because I didn't have an issue with how it was written. So, we'll have to come back to that one.
Yep, so we defer that?
Yeah. Motion to defer the meeting minutes for...
Well, there's, we have the motion already on the table, so...
Oh.
Yeah.
True.
So, for, if we wanted to defer...
Somebody can amend that motion?
We didn't, we didn't have a second yet, so I will rescind my motion that's on the floor.
Thank you, appreciate it.
So, I need a motion to approve board minutes of 2/4/25.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed.
And I would make a motion to defer approval of meeting minutes 2/13/25 until the clerk has a chance to review and, and re-submit them.
And I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Okay. We go to... Number seven, presentation of written communications received and forwarded?
We have to, okay, never mind.
No, not until later.
Yeah. All of them together at once.
There was none? Number eight, reports of standing statutory and special meetings committees of others? None. We come to number nine, public comment on agenda items. Any public comment on agenda items?
And I've also, oh, go ahead.
What about on the airport? Should I wait till later, or?
Do you have anything on this today?
Is that, I don't think there's anything on the airport.
No.
No, it's just at the end.
That would be general public comment.
Well, that would be general public comment.
Yeah. It's general public comment, so...
Yeah.
Yes, please, thank you, Will.
I've also checked to make sure that there's no remote public comment on agenda items, and there is not at this time.
Okay, any other public comment on agenda items? Seeing none, we will move on to Committee Reports, Administration Report.
We're making good progress in the search for the new airport manager. The interview and selection process is proceeding as we have planned. Oh, I see. Endant on my next portion. We're looking to call back a few individuals for a second interview, so that's an update with the airport manager. I apologize for the error in my administrator's report. MIDC Lead Attorney, we're still looking for a lead attorney to head our Indigenous Defense Council, but I've been working with our regional manager on the efforts of the transition and our administrative support for the program. Airport operations are currently stable. Ongoing projects are continued as scheduled. Billing, receipting, processing are functioning normally. I met with Meaden Hunt to discuss the terminal project, which is included in the airport improvement plan. We've applied for state grant funding that became available to us. We won't know the award of it until, I believe it was March. The terminal grant funding that we want to apply for, for the federal, is due in July, and we need a study done in order to apply for that grant. Opioid Task Force, as Commissioner Van Genhoven said in the meeting this morning, we're looking for requests, grant funding applications. We've only received one so far. So, I hope everybody can look in, there's, the website is located right on my administrator's report that will bring you to the application. And then, the Fetcher Affairs Committee, so I received a complaint about the appointments that were made last week, or last meeting. And I'm reviewing the process on those appointments, and I will provide an update later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Committee Reports.
Motion to place on file.
Support.
Sorry. Getting ahead of myself. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Now, Committee Reports, 1.5 Personnel Report, Committee Minutes from 1/30/25 and corrected on 2/13/25.
Do you want me to go over it, or would you like to just place on file?
It's up to you. You're the chair.
I think it was pretty much self-standing on, on the minutes. Commissioner Johnson and I continue to work on our, our policies for personnel, and we've had some great discussion back and forth, and it's nice to be able to have somebody, oh, that we can debate, have healthy debate, and come to a compromise. It's great. I would just encourage everyone that if you feel you want to attend a Personnel or Finance Committee meeting but are unable to do so, that you suggest that we have that on live stream as well. That's all I have. Do you want to add anything, Pat?
No, I think that's great.
Okay.
Okay. I need a motion to put the Personnel Committee Minutes on file?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion?
Aye, oh, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed, okay. Department Updates, any department updates?
Good afternoon. As you all know, I'm Lauren McFinn, the Prosecutor Attorney for Delta County. I just wanted to give you a quick update on what we've done in the prosecutor's office thus far, about six weeks into 2025, which seems hard to believe in and of itself at this point. At this point, we are fully up and running. We are fully staffed. We have hired for our open clerk's position that was granted as part of last year's budget. So, I thank the board again for that. The individual will be starting at the beginning of March, and we're very excited to get her up and running, and then we will be absolutely full steam ahead. All three prosecutors have been running around like crazy people at this point, and we've been doing trials quite frequently. Our newest prosecutor, Assistant Prosecutor Lauren Mattson, had her first jury trial in December of 2024, and was successful with a guilty verdict in that matter in the district court. So, we're very happy to see her come forward with that win on her very first jury trial. It's a big milestone for any prosecutor. Most recently, I was last week downstate in Traverse City, attending a prosecutor's, New Prosecutor School that's put on every four years. So, despite being elected in the special election in 2022, there was no opportunity to attend, so I took opportunity to attend this year, and we covered a lot of really interesting topics. We had a very good discussion on the Crime and Victims Rights Act, how that's applicable in all avenues of what we have to do in our office, how it intercedes with the Constitution and the rights and responsibilities our half, our office has. So, I've had a lot of good information to bring back to our office and our victim advocate on that. We discussed the different trial techniques and tips, as well as working with multi-disciplinary teams in the Child Advocacy Center. That was a very interesting topic for me. I serve on the Board of Directors for RCAC here in Delta County, and work closely with their multi-disciplinary team. And they had a couple of really good ideas about how to branch out and make sure that you're establishing appropriate and concrete relationships with individuals that we have to interact with. The New Prosecutor School transitioned into the annual mid-winter conference that the entirety of the Prosecutors Association has the opportunity to attend. So, old prosecutors who have been there for 35-plus years, as well as those brand-new ones. So, it was very interesting to have that wide variety of experiences, as well as everywhere from Wayne County to our size and smaller counties. So, we had different presentations in that matter as well. The neurobiology of trauma went a little over, I think, everybody's head because it got very scientific, but it was really interesting to see not only how a victim reacts and some changes that has been accustomed, that I've been accustomed to in my years, that new studies have shown maybe not be the truth moving forward on how a victim reacts to trauma, but also how to take traumatic experiences that are staff experiences and make sure they're handled inappropriate as well. So, again, really interesting information to bring back to my staff in my office. We talked about communications in crisis. I had some interesting presentations and roundtables from prosecutors who've unfortunately had to deal with mass shooting incidents and how they handled the situation. So, it was very insightful, heartbreaking across the board, but very interesting to learn from their unfortunate experiences. We had a presentation on AI technology, the risks that we see and how that's interacting with what's coming through. We can really trust the videos that are being placed in front of us. We can really trust the audio recordings that were being placed in front of us, how those can be manipulated, but also how us as prosecutors can use that technology to help in our offices, ease some of the burdens. And they went through a lot of different examples on things I never would have thought to use AI for. Jury voir dire, the questions that I would ask for picking a jury, just to give us some examples, give us different ideas, so incredibly interesting. And then finally, we had a presentation on the changes in the law related to child sexually abusive material and child accosting cases. It might typically be this extortion phrasing that you've heard, we're trying to not use that, so that's why it's the child accosting type statute. What those news are, new laws are, and how we can utilize them to make sure we're protecting the most vulnerable in our community with the children. So, there was fantastic resources that we were given, lots of connections made to local U.P. prosecutors. We share a lot of common defendants, defense attorneys, and issues, and so it's always good to connect with them and make sure that we're pretty much all on the same page, as well as the resources that Prosecutor Association has, as a whole, has. So, it was good to reestablish some of those connections, so... I just wanted to update everybody on how our office is moving forward, and we've got a lot of stuff on the horizon, so I'll continue to provide you updates.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Any more department head updates? Seeing none, we will move on to new business, payment of bills?
I have examined all claims presented and recommend payment of the following, and that the county clerk be directed to issue orders on the county treasurer to the claimants for the amounts allowed. Grand total of bills, $1,576,048.07. Commissioner expenses, $697.88.
And move that we pay our bills in the sum of $1,576,048.07, and commissioner expenses of $697.88.
Support.
We have a motion for, we need a roll call?
Johnson?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Van Genhoven?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
And Melner?
Yes.
Okay, our bills are paid. Number two, Delta County Conservation District.
Um, any of you commissioners? Nancy, Ashley?
Thanks for letting me stop by. I try not to take too much of your time, but I did want to give you an update. I think I'll try to come maybe quarterly as we're getting things going at the district and finally starting to get into the community. and finally starting to get into the community and develop some programming and some fun things for the county members. So first thing I wanted to go over that I thought would be of interest is we were at Fuller Park a couple of weeks ago doing invasive species assessment of the hemlock woolly adelshet. I hope I'm saying that right.
You are.
Thank you. I knew you would know. So SISMA Lake to Lake is a cooperative invasive species management area. They're out of Marquette and we work with them and we're starting to work more and more with them. They come down and they look at my communities, HWA, different invasive species concerns in the county. HWA is not up here right now. It is down in lower state though, so we're trying to be proactive. And I got to go out and learn how to identify it for the first time and it was really, really cool being out at Fuller at the park there. And we are going to put on our website just some, like a key identification key so that the community members, if they think they might have something, you know, please give us a call. We'll have information and resources to contact SISMA too. And one of us will get out there. We'd rather see a look-alike or an imposter than not deal with it at all. But we definitely want to educate people on that. So more to come, but we are developing the website to have invasive species guide on there now. But clean villa health for Fuller on that. We did see the fragmites patch that has been being treated. It looks really, really good, like it's almost dead. There was a little bit sticking out. I did see a second patch out there too that started, but it's not big. It's not really big. So they're going to be pretty aggressive with that in the spring and go out and spray and hopefully we won't see that too much out there anymore. So do you guys have any questions about Fuller at all? Because you probably know what's going out there. For me, it was really interesting to learn. I'm being trained right now to do kind of invasive species site visits. So I will, yeah, we'll just have everything on the website as we go and probably about a month or so to get it really fully developed. There'll also be landowner permission slips because, you know, you guys signed one for us to go out into Fuller and the different parks and we'll have it on the website. So if the landowner wants us to come out and do a site visit, they can just sign the landowner form right there, the permission, and then we'll get out there. But top invasive species from our conservationist in our office was obviously the fragmites, spotted knappweed, reed canary grass, sorry, and the honeysuckle. And then there's other ones too, but those are the ones that we saw at the 600 acres and visited the last month or so. So a little bit on invasive species, which brings me into my next topic, the Spring Tree fundraiser, we're calling it now. Because the best way to combat invasive species is to plant native, native plants and shrubs and trees. So our store is open right now on our website, deltaCD.org. If you don't like the computer, we always say come into the office. We have the kiosk set up again and we can help walk you through it. We have a lot of new stuff, a lot of new wild shrub seedlings, but we are selling out. Like for some reason, we're in our, just started our fourth week. But in two weeks, we already sold out of some of the things for some reason. It's really, it's going really fast this year.
Have you sold out of figs yet?
We have six left.
Okay. Because I know you were really excited about fig trees.
I know. And we have instructions, you know. We're going to tell people to grow them in pots and overwinter them in the house, but hopefully it's going to, the figs are going to be amazing.
It's a nice problem to have this early in.
Yeah, it is. And so get on our website or give us a call. We can help you, but yeah, don't wait. That's the message there. The pickup is the last week of April. We're always looking for volunteers for that. And it'll be out at Barn 10 again at the Fairgrounds. Another new thing we're doing, just to give you some updates, is we are doing a native plant wildflower sale to really like help motivate people to do more pollinator habitat. And we don't mean rip your roses out and rip out your, you know, your tulips, but how to plant pollinator patches or pollinator habitat with the things that maybe aren't native but you love too. So we're going to do a workshop on May 22nd. You'll get a free plant and we'll have more on that later on our website, but it'll be somewhere in town and that's free to the public. So we can kind of show you how to start something small, but with the things you have in your yard already. And then our plant sale will be June 21st down at the Marketplace in town. Yeah, so you can buy online. Probably into March, we'll start advertising for that. We even have pollinator kits where you can get everything you want, you know, kind of like a paint-by-numbers thing. But anyway, we'll get that going on our website into March and then advertise, I'll let you guys know about the workshop, the pollinator workshop. So that should be really, really, really fun. And then, let's see, that's June 21st. I think that's all I have on Spring Tree and Native Plants and Great Easter Presents. Do you guys have any questions on that?
No.
Okay, we got really good stuff this year. And then the last thing is we have a Conservation on Tap series we just started. So we'll have an event each quarter, you know, three months or so. Our first one is the composting 101 to teach people and bring people together that compost and we can share stories, but just to go over different topics as, you know, like the worm barrel bins that we might do with some of the schools and then kitchen composting, other types of composting. But we are doing it at Saunders Point Brewery on March 13th, I think, Thursday night. It's $15 for this one, but you get a drink ticket, you get a compost bucket to take home and we'll have some raffles. And that's limited. You can come, anybody can come, but if you want to participate and get the free stuff, then you can go onto our online store on our website and get a ticket and show up and just have some fun. And yeah, that's pretty much it with that. And I think our next one is going to be our Meet the Forester Trivia Night. I don't know where yet, but somewhere where there's alcohol because it's kind of going to tap. But we'll let you know. That is my first quarter report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
I do, I just wanted to point out that I am very glad to hear that there's some concentration on invasive species. I mean, we can just look around our, you know, beautiful forests and even our urban landscape and see what the Emerald Ash Bore did to us. And, you know, if we can be more proactive and try to, you know, get ahead of our hemlock invasive species that's heading our way. I can't even imagine our Upper Peninsula forest without hemlock. I just can't imagine it, so.
And we'll have some stuff too going down at like, we're going to put a pollinator habitat space down at the DVA building. And so there's lots of fun things coming up. If you've got any ideas or any requests, don't hesitate to reach out to us too.
Thank you.
If you want to help out.
I got a question. On along the highways and I can't think of the name of the plant, but it's a yellow and it burns like crazy. It'll burn your skin.
Oh, wild parsnip.
The parsnip.
Yeah, wild parsnip. Wild parsnip.
Yeah, we were just talking about that. So we're looking into that too. I mean, there's just so much out there. It's almost overwhelming, but that is on our list to get on our website and start pushing some education out on that and then some, we're working with SISMA on that, so.
Are you working at all with the road commission? Because when they cut, all they do is drag it right along with it.
Well, that's great that you mention that because I'm just starting to dip my toes in this and I will definitely put that on my list to reach out to them.
Okay.
Absolutely.
They have an absolutely amazing, wonderful trifold with dealing with wild parsnip as far as information at their office, so.
Right.
Yeah, I'll make sure I can.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We will move on?
Thanks, Heather.
We'll move on to number three, zoning case number 1-25-PC.
Matt can take it.
Matt? So it was recommended from the Planning Commission to come forward. This was with approval. The request is for a zoning change to rural residential and a conditional use so that they can split and sale the house with two-plus acres. And it does actually conform within the adjacent areas as far as usage goes.
Okay. Get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We need a roll call.
Oh, yep.
Roll call.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dan Kenhoven?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Ann Melner?
Motion passed. Number four, RFP, Master Plan 2025.
The Planning Commission is beginning the process of reviewing our master plan. So attached in your packet is a request for qualification seeking a planning consultant to assist the Planning Commission.
I'm super, super, super excited about this. Just a little bit.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion. I'm super, super, super excited. Yes, I would, I will make a motion that we go out for an RFQ for master plan development.
I'll support.
Okay. Any discussion?
RFP, correct.
Did, what did I say?
RFQ.
Oh, well, RFP. It's in here as recall. It's here as RFQ.
Q and P, okay.
Yeah, it does say RFQ.
Now, is it supposed to be an RFP or RFQ?
It should be an RFQ.
Yeah, RFQ.
Okay.
It's P on the agenda, but it's Q in there.
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passed. Number five, Master Plan 2025 Notice of Intent.
The Planning Commission is sending a notice of intent to start working on mending the master plan. One thing you will, and you'll see it on that notice of intent, is that on our website, under Master Plan, there is a section for the public to submit their comments and those comments will go directly to the subcommittee that the Planning Commission formed.
Perfect.
Cool.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passed. Number six, landfill letter of credit.
This is an annual request to the Board of Commissioners. Delta Solid Waste Management Authority is seeking the county to sign the $1.1 million open letter of credit with birthday. This letter of credit was originally issued in September of 2016 and is for the financial assurance requirements of the north side landfill. Little background, Delta Solid Waste is a joint venture with Delta County. The joint venture relationship with the authority is to achieve the public objective such as the mandate of waste management. So by having this joint venture with the authority at Delta County, it shares in the financial operational risks.
I do have a.
Terry is here if we have any questions.
Okay.
From Solid Waste.
I do have a question and this may just be because I'm new, because I know this has been going on for a while, the same sort of thing. On page nine of the documents that we have here, you know, it talks about this balloon payment. So obviously we have interest that we're going to pay on the loan. So it's $107,104.17 that we'll pay in interest at 7.5%, which is a totally acceptable interest rate. I looked that up. But my question is, on loans like this, do we have any kind of policy or procedure or process in which we do with our purchasing of, you know, property or, you know, things that's fair and open and equitable? So for instance, it reads in our policy, which is our procurement and purchase policy, "The county conducts procurement transactions by fair and open competition to reduce the opportunity for favoritism and to inspire public confidence that purchases are equitable and economical." So my question is, do we always get the loan from the same lender? Or do we go out and look for and have like competition in that interest rate by looking to other? Thank you. Yeah. Looking to other vendors.
For historical.
Okay.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for having me. So this is just a letter of credit. It's not actually a loan. It's just open and available out there. We have to maintain financial assurance for you, Delta State of Michigan. And just showing them that if for some reason they came in, had to shut down the landfill, this is a line of credit that is available out there that they could use to keep the landfill running.
Oh, okay, so you're not actually, you may or may not use the money. It's a line of credit.
We are hoping we never have to.
Okay, okay, I understand better. I understand.
And we do have a couple of letter of credits from different places, different banks within Delta County. Asking out, but trying to get everybody a fair share there if we ever had to use us.
Okay, thank you. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I do have one last question and I don't know whether you're the person to answer it or not, but on the next page, which is page 10, it's two of three of the commercial promissory note. There's a, where it's the guarantee and it basically says a guarantee was dated April 6th, 2021 and has been executed by Delta County. Doesn't that mean it's our collateral? And I'm just wondering, what is our collateral? And if nobody has this right now, I'm okay with that. I can look into it. But it's basically something that was signed and dated on April 6th, 2021 and it's collateral against this loan or this potential loan. And I don't know what that is. Do you know what it is?
I believe that collateral is just the full faith of the county. I don't think we actually have any assets tied up with that.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. I just don't, it doesn't detail what it is.
No.
So, okay.
Yeah, I'm unaware of anything. That was for collateral and I've been there since 2021. Nothing was ever.
Okay, I'll just look into it outside of the meeting, so no problem. Thank you.
That just goes back to the county and ultimately, if the landfill authority goes away, it's our bag.
Yeah.
So that's why we always pass. To answer your question about, do we look for competitive and give equal opportunity? And the answer is yes.
For loans.
We have a few savings bonds that we put out for bids as a county or as a landfill authority. And we've managed to negotiate half percentage here, half percentage there, so.
It makes sense over a million dollars.
Yeah, it's worked out.
And it's also nice, this is kind of a large amount for these banks, these local banks to give us a letter of credit for.
Yeah.
So there's only a few of them that will actually work with us. Baybank also works with us.
Perfect.
We have a $750,000 line of credit with them, so.
Okay. Perfect, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
Ashley, did you have something? Yeah, so that guarantee that you were, it's in next slide. If you go to the April 6th, Agenda Item 5.
Thank you very much.
Move to assign a letter of credit.
Get support?
I'll support.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passed. We move on to number seven, Fuller Park Pavilion and Picnic Area Development.
So this project concerning the OB Fuller deuse area has been discussed extensively over the past year and a half. The initial plan aimed to bring Delta County into compliance with the trust funds requirements per the 1987 grant agreement. The following, following that, we had a wetland delineation that felted an ego coming down and had recommended to our parks manager to relocate the project. This will assist in permitting purposes and such. So that relocation is in your agenda packet. So in order for us to move forward with this project, we need Commissioner approval of the change of location. If approval is given, we will start soliciting quotes for the engineered architect plan to be compliant with the Michigan Building Code. After selecting the engineer, we'll have to begin issuing RFPs for the necessary materials, concrete or other substantial services with this project. As previously planned, our staff, tradespersons that we have will perform majority of the construction of like the pavilion and such.
County staff, elected officials, and appointed officials recently met with the trust fund to discuss this project. The trust fund reiterated their position from the September 3rd email to Commissioner Duncan Hoven, emphasizing the importance of the five-year rec plan that the Parks Commission is currently going through. In suggesting that the, in quotes, "loop drive near where the Bark River meets Lake Michigan" as the ideal location for the day-use area. They believe the single location near the beach and river access is preferable to dividing the day-use area and potentially causing confusion. Their email further states that delaying construction to finalize the recreation is within the board's purview, so you have that choice. While the trust fund recommends prioritizing the five-year recreation plan to gather public input specifically on that OB Fuller Park, when I, um, was in the Parks Commission meeting last week, QPAD had presented that if we wanted any specific projects, we could add that to our survey. So, QPAD is able to tailor a part of their survey to this project, and we've already secured the funding through Board of Commissioner approval. So, if the Commissioner, Commission wishes to continue with the project, we need approval for the new location.
And I would like to just make a comment that, um, the, the trust fund, the Parks Commission, uh, and the, um, Parks Manager, um, have all indicated that the five-year rec plan is a priority, and that it makes sense to get input on OB Fuller and the development there, uh, from our public before we make, uh, final decisions on it. I was asked by our, uh, Parks Manager to please, uh, make a motion at the Commission meet, at the Commission, to get public input, to make the priority be the, um, five-year rec plan, and to, his quote was, "Pause the project," but I just say, you know, "We just need to get input, we need to get our public input on OB Fuller Park." Um, and so, I would not suggest that we move forward at this point, we wait until we've finished our five-year rec plan, which will be done by February 1st, and as Ashley has indicated, which I think is important, the survey to the public would have, um, would have this particular project as one of the survey items, so you would be able to garner public input, um, readily, which we've had very little public input for this project, and I think that's incredibly important, um, so that's my-
That's February of next year.
February, 2026, so it's from now, uh, we will turn the project in, uh, and it will be ready for, uh, funded, for projects to be funded in 2026 as well, it will be, we will be able to submit projects in 2026. But it doesn't have to necessarily be this project, because there's funding already set aside for it, um, but I'm just saying, we would at least gather, uh, public input.
Will we have all of our current projects completed by 2026?
What, what do you mean?
We have open projects, um, with our last, um, trust fund grant. Do you know if we'll have those projects completed by then?
There's one.
Yep, do you know if that one will be-
And that's on extension, the plan right now is for that to be done and open for when the fair starts in August.
Yeah, that's the, that's, yep.
That's the plan.
And we did a reduced, um, we reduced what we were going to do for that, correct?
Oh, on the size of, yes, originally, they were looking at two facilities, um, but based on the length of time, um, until the start and completion, um, and obviously inflation with the cost of materials, they looked at, it's not, instead of just one, it's like, one that's bigger versus two smaller ones now.
And the change order with that, um, did that get approved by the trust fund?
I do know they did a, um, an extension, I don't know about an amendment, I'd have to check on that.
Cause my worry is, is that we prom, or that, that project was promised, and then we're giving half to three quarters of that project, and if we're giving half to three quarters of that project, what's that gonna do for our, um, trust fund completion of that before we go for another five-year plan?
And I-
Not that we shouldn't go for a five-year plan-
Yeah.
But, um, if we really want, if we want any monies, it's such a big point gain when we have all of our projects completed before we get the next.
But I'm, right, but I wasn't suggesting that the OB Fuller project be necessarily the project that we asked to get funded, that wasn't what I was getting at, I was saying that we have an opportunity to finally collect public input-
Okay.
On the project, which we have not done.
My, oh-
No, go ahead, please.
My, my worry with that, um, every year we delay, every year we have more inflation, every year it's gonna be more expensive. And it's already been approved by two separate commissions, I just wanna get a shovel in the ground and get it done.
Yeah, I just wanna hear from our public whether we need to do it, and if it's what they want.
Okay.
So, is there, is there any motion at all right now?
I would make a motion that we pause the OB Fuller project until our, uh, five-year rec plan is complete.
I'll support it.
Okay.
And I'll ask for a roll call.
Any more discussion?
I was gonna ask, and there, one of the things with the, the change, I mean, you alluded to that with the change in price versus what's already been allocated, that was obviously out of revenues, and three, three separate boards have already pursued that. Now, obviously, with the five-year plan, um, being as close, I mean, that's still another year out, so, what we've already allocated, um, in the course of a year, I don't, I don't know that that will even be viable, but the one, other thing to look at is what's gonna go in for the engineering on it. We already know that, I mean, that was even last fall.
I don't even know that that was included in the original price, the engineering.
He'd said, well, my understanding, that was his whole price when he was talking about pavilion, um, of that portion in there. Um, and I know who they were working with, the individual retired, so they were having to get another one, so, I mean, it's just another one of those that's been, you know, a trickle, I, I would still love to see that go forward and actually be, yes, it's a commercial, um, commercially sold one, but because of price and size, that engineering still needs to be there. If there's a suspense, um, that once that, that type is certified, I don't know what an engineering firm looking at short of, you know, the blueprints are gonna get, in this case, he was looking, I think, at even like one of them through Mid-Arts, for example, there's a whole lot that they have to do with that.
Right, but I think more importantly is, uh, the trust fund has made it very clear that this mix of day use and, um, camping is not conducive to what the intent of the trust fund funding for this, this, um, park was. So, I, I'm a little concerned that we don't seem to have any, I mean, we met with the trust fund, they said to us, "You were there, Ashley was there, Ashley said at the Parks Commission meeting, what was discussed." Our Parks Manager says, "I don't wanna move forward on this right now, I wanna focus on the five-year rec plan and get public input." I don't understand why we are wanting to push something that has no public input, it was just a design by someone, there's no public input, there's no public hearing, there's no public anything. And we have the trust fund telling us, this is not conducive to what the intent, original intent was, and there's confusion by mixing day use and, uh, and camping. I don't understand, so please enlighten me, everybody, why you feel like it's so important that we move forward on this, like, right now, because we have just a few months, a nice summer that we could be collecting data from campers and our public on what they wanna see in OB Fuller Park, so please enlighten me.
Commissioner Johnson?
As, as I stated, um, every year's a delay, costs more money.
No, that's not necessarily the case.
Inflation happens.
Well, that's a big statement.
Well, could I, could I ask, oh, I'm sorry.
Can I finish?
Yeah.
Um, and so, I don't see why, um, why we need to delay this anymore, we, we, we have the money set aside, that money is still $75,000, that money's not getting any bigger with inflation, um, so therefore, move forward, that way we can move forward, just get it done.
May I ask, may I add? Um, if we are to complete our five-year rec plan and become, uh, in compliance with the trust fund, they will ma- they will match a two to one, so it would take our $75,000 down to $25,000 if we were to receive a grant on that funds. Also, I'm trying to figure out, and this goes back to my statement that I made in September, is that it was my understanding that this pavilion and parking lot and playground was being constructed to, um, to come into compliance with day use, because right now, we are not in compliance with day use. And what John Mays told me, and what I, um, sent out to all the commissioners in emails, was that this project would not bring us back into compliance with our day use. And so, I, I, I mean, I, I've sat through one meeting where I was the only dissenting vote on this, but I did my work, I did my research on it, and it was decided to put the sho- the shovels in the ground, but at that meeting as well, Parks Manager Weary was here, and he said, if, if the Commission voted to, you know, put this on hold until we got all of our ducks in a row for everything that, uh, Mr. Mays had wanted to see, and what our rec plan needed to be, and how we could get back into compliance with everything, he was okay with that as well. So... I don't know, we'll just see where, where the vote takes us.
I guess one of the things in that, though, even, even, even with what he said for when the age of it, when it was originally done, in the original tent, he understands things move and things change, and ultimately, it comes out to us. It's, it's not like it's, it's literally, you know, set in stone, there's, you know, things can change within it.
But of course, yeah. But, but that, but typically, you change things with public input. I, I'm really, really not understanding what's going on right now, I feel like I'm being manipulated a bit here, because everyone was in these meetings, and it's very clear that the public engagement, the public input is key, it's absolutely key with the trust fund, that's what they wanna see. They want the development of the parks to engage the public, and this project has never engaged the public, it never went in front of a, a public hearing, we've never asked our public what they want, we've never shown them a design and said, "Hey, you have input on this, come and talk to us about it, is this what you want?" We have never, uh, queried the campers when we, when the campers are there, we've done nothing. So, I don't understand why the, I mean, there's like a game being played here, why this has to go right now.
I believe-
Johnson?
I believe we've had, oh, sorry, I'll defer to Ashley.
No, I just wanted to say, like, I just seen a lot of eye contact over here, I just gave the facts, so I have a new commission, so I wanted everybody to be up to date on the history, and I also explained, and I said it right here, cause I wrote it down, I knew what was gonna come with this subject matter. Um, the trust fund reiterated their position from the seventh, uh, second, or third email, which I think is the one that Commissioner Duncan Hoven is citing, emphasizing the importance of the five-year rec plan, and suggesting the loop near where the Bark River meets the Lake Michigan as the ideal location.
Yes.
So, that is the two subjects, I believe, that we're at, talked about prior to. Um, they believe that that central, that single location near the beach and river access is preferable, rather than splitting the day-use area and potentially causing confusion.
And, we acknowledge that your plan, this plan, this map that you showed them, does not provide day use at Bark River, it cuts off Bark River. That was part of the pro- that was part of the problem that we discussed, Bark River, it's not just the beach, but it was Bark River as well.
Right, Commissioner, but I still have to show that this is the plan that Eagle, or this is the recommendation of Eagle because of the wetland delineation, cause I already had approval of proceeding with this project, so I had to show that side. Then I'm also giving the information, this is what the trust fund is telling us, now the question relies on the commission.
Right, and there's, there's a, there's a motion in a second, so.
And what can we-
Can, can you s-
Jensen, what did you have to say, I'm sorry.
I, I was just gonna say the one thing, and, and you're right, I mean, you do have the match with funds in there, but also, and this is something, I mean, and I know everybody here knows it's for the others, when you do that and, and utilize that for, like, even if it's this project for the trust fund down the road, now you're locked in to that, in those areas, without, unless you're gonna go through and request that you're changing, you're making it better, or whatever, if it's self-funded, you don't have those limitations.
And that's fine, I, I just, I, I think it just boi- it just boils down to the fact that we are here, we were voted in to represent the people, we wanna push a project, we wanna shove it down everybody's throat when they've had absolutely no input, I call the question.
I disagree with that.
I call the question.
Okay, can you, uh, let me know what the motion was?
We have to do a motion, um, the question's been called.
To call the question.
The question's been called.
Okay. Got a motion?
It, I made the motion.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does she need support on that? I've never done a call to question yet.
Yeah.
I think so, yes.
I'll support.
Okay, do we need a vote on this, then?
Yep. Roll call, please.
Uh, Jensen, this is to call the question.
No.
Williams?
Yes.
Duncan Hoven?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
And Melner?
No.
Okay, so the question's called now.
Yeah.
So, now-
We do have a motion in for, right?
Yep, the original motion.
So, the original motion was moved by Commissioner, uh, Williams and seconded by Commissioner Johnson to delay, uh, the project, Fuller Park project, until the master plan is completed.
The five-year rec plan.
I'm sorry, five-year rec.
That's okay.
Okay. I, uh, want another roll call.
This is to delay it, okay? Johnson?
No.
Williams?
Yes.
Duncan Hoven?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
And Melner?
No.
That was a whole lot of fun, okay.
On to... Number eight.
It's not in here.
The, uh, utilities meant for Fuller Park. UPCO?
Our Parks Manager approached my department and asked for this, uh, to take no action tonight, he is still waiting for some updates, um, there, I believe, from the plan, or, he might wanna say, planning commission, Parks Commission, um, requiring some amendments to the original easement, so we just haven't received those documents yet. It's gonna take a moment for UPCO because it's, it's not as a simple process, so, no action necessary. Okay.
So, we will, do you have any idea when? No idea.
Matt, did you go out there?
What's that?
Did you do that, walk through a street that you were in?
No, the one that we were gonna do in the fall, no, that's when he had the other issue come up, this is for the one, we did have a sit-down with the folks from UPCO-
Uh-huh.
And then, we had talked about moving that line coming into the other side of the road to facilitate the cabins.
Okay.
It's their engineering folks that were waiting on it.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, uh, we don't need to take a vote on that. Number nine, loan renew- renewal, MSU, uh, SAF.
Yes, so, this is for our aircraft in front of the airport, um, this is an annual request to ensure that Delta County verify the property that is in our care, is used for the approved purposes, is being maintained, protected according to the loan agreement, and that Delta County still desires to retain the property, a physical inspection of the aircraft, and to document any changes. The advisory board took no action in the month, um, on this item at their meeting, so I'm just requesting this to be tabled until, I believe, the airport advisory board takes action.
Okay, can I get a mo-
Or deferred.
Deferred? Can I get a motion to defer?
Motion to defer.
I'll support.
We discussed this, though, right?
Yeah, but we didn't take any action, I went back in our minutes.
Yeah, the, in fact, the discussion, they actually had the individuals that volunteered from the advisory board to actually head up, finding out the restoration-
Yeah.
And the points of contact.
And we didn't take any action.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We have till the 31st.
And no initials on that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But there, that's the plan, between the three different paint schemes-
Yeah, because-
And they have the labor and stuff to do.
So, so backstory with that, um, when, um, our airport manager, Rand Statler, was still with us, he had, uh, mentioned that he was having a hard time finding someone who would be able to restore it, um, it's getting to the point where it definitely needs a new paint job, needs up, updating, um, but, uh-
Um, but, um, Commissioner Johnson and our airport, um, board member Brad Reed were looking into options, you know, but it has to have a specific paint, it has to have a specific pattern. And so, um, but if we don't take it and we don't keep it, then we still have to pay for the restoration and then we have to pay to ship it back.
Yeah.
Yes, so, I'm sorry that no action was taken on that. Move to defer.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass. On to number 10, FOIA procedures and guidelines.
Uh, I just was asking to have one thing fixed in section eight. Um, in section eight, it refers to the chairperson of the Board of Commissioners as the head of the public body, and that's not correct. Um, it's the Board of Commissioners that's the head of the public body. So I'm just suggesting or asking that we, uh, modify that so it becomes into, uh, becomes compliant with the law. And, um, everywhere it says chairperson of the, it would just be stricken and it would just say Board of Commissioners. That's it.
Can I get a motion to?
Yeah, that was my motion, yeah.
I'll support.
All in favor?
Well, hold on.
Well, hold on, we have to discuss, we have to discuss.
Now, with that, um, that's not just taking away his signatory though, correct? Like, he's not going to be the signatory or the final signatory on it if we take that out of there?
I don't know what you mean.
So, anything that he might have to sign for FOIA, we're not taking that away and saying, okay, now it's got to be five signatures as opposed to one?
No, 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 this is section eight, it's just the appeal of denial of public record. So in FOIA, when, uh, when, when you're denied and you file an appeal, it's the head of the public body that makes the final decision. And in our FOIA guidelines, it says it's the chairperson of the Board of Commissioners, but it's not. It's the, it's the Board of Commissioners as a whole is the head of the public body. There's no one individual. And there, it's a little bit confusing sometimes when you're first reading FOIA because if, like, you're, say, a township, your head of the public body might be your supervisor. But it clearly states in FOIA that when the head of the public body is a commission, then it's the commission that makes the decision. So it's not an individual, it's the commission.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass. Okay, number 11, um, determination of conflict of interest workman comp committee.
By, I tell you, Commissioner Williams?
Oh, yeah, that, oh, yeah, thank you. It's like, wait, what is that? Um, uh, so what I had asked for, I, I didn't actually ask for it, I just was talking about it in the finance committee. Um, I had a concern that, um, we have this workers' comp committee and there's this extra compensation that's associated with it, and the chair assigns themselves to it and they don't take input on anybody else being assigned to it. So my question was, is that a conflict of interest since you're actually getting additional financial benefit? And, um, the prosecutor's office worked up the, um, uh, opinion on that. It came back that it was not a conflict of interest because we all vote at the end and we say, we put our stamp of approval on it, so therefore it's not a conflict. So, um, at this point, it's not a conflict of interest and we know that. Um, the way that we would deal with it in the future would be if we want to, um, look at our rules of procedure and have something modified there that would change it. But otherwise, there's no conflict of interest.
Could I, could I say, in the past though, we have had other people not chairs as the person?
That's fine. What I was getting, what I was asking about the conflict of interest was when you assign it to yourself and don't query anyone else for it, is that a conflict of interest? Because there's a financial gain there.
Well, my question then would also be, you know, the way we did it at this past reorganizational was that if the commissioner was already on it, they had first dibs to keep it, and if another commissioner wanted it, they could say, oh, I'm just going to keep it.
Right, right.
You know, so is that a rules of procedure thing?
That's a rules of procedure, absolutely, yeah.
That's the, um, pleasure of the chair though, isn't it? Like, if, like, you really don't have dibs. If the chair's like, uh, tough, I don't want you on that, you're gone, then, I mean, you're gone. Like, you don't really have dibs on your.
Yeah, that's our rules, that's our rules of procedure.
But the chair can remove you at any time and say, we have a new person.
Mm-hmm. So how does that hap, how does that work if it's the chair?
It's the chair, like.
No, 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 but I'm saying, like, okay, so the chair can decide to remove another commissioner.
Sure.
So how do we decide to remove the chair from a board then?
Remove the chair.
I don't think that's in our rules of procedure, but we could certainly.
Well, you, you voted, you voted the chair, um, and I don't believe we do have a rule, like, we don't have a vote of no confidence for our chair.
Right, that's, yeah.
But, I mean, every year we vote our chair.
Mm-hmm.
So we voted our chair, that's what our chair did. We don't like it, we have three more, or nine more months until we vote again.
Okay, uh, that was mainly information then? Or do we need a motion on that?
Um, yeah, that was just informational.
Informational, okay. Num, number 12.
Uh, Nancy, uh, going back to, uh, number seven, Fuller Park Pavilion.
Okay.
Going back to, uh, number seven, Fuller Park Pavilion and picnic area, where we had called the question, actually, and I called the question, it has to be a two-thirds vote, and, uh, we didn't, we had a three-fifths vote. Uh, two-thirds vote would have to have been four commissioners, so, but I don't know that that, we can fix that at this point.
Uh, could I, could I say what I was going to say?
Sure.
I'm asking the chair, I'm asking the chair.
Yeah.
Like, could I say what I was going to say? Perfect. Um, I, this, I mean, this doesn't change the vote at all, but at least it gets into the public body. Um, the, the fact that we, uh, that it's been stated that, um, the public was not polled, um, this came from our campground director, or the campground supervisor, that a playground was wanted and needed, and that a pavilion was wanted and needed because he did poll those campers. So, and that was five, six years ago. And he was, like, he was the driver of that to have a playground. Otherwise, the playground would have never been added.
Yeah, I'm absolutely for a playground. What I'm talking about is there was no day use polled. So camper, it's not just camping at OB Fuller Park.
Well, no, but you, you also said, you also said campers weren't polled, so I.
I can, I can add to that. Um, I had, sorry, I had spoken to, um, Manager Weary because he had made statements, um, up at the podium that, he said, the people want this. The people, the people want this. And I said, show me the data that the people want this.
Sure.
Who wants this? Is it campers at OB Fuller Park? Is it people of Ford River Township? Is it people of Bark River Township? Like, I need to see the data. Because I could just as equally say, I camp at Fuller, I haven't heard anybody say they want a pavilion. And so I wanted to see the data on it, and there was no data. So, and with all due respect, I think Commissioner Williams is asking for the data. I had provided in my email that the only data that I could find in my research was from Ford River Township's five-year rec plan, in which they stated they wanted the beach you, the beach area back at OB Fuller Park, and that at the time, the parks manager said that was not feasible. And so my question now is, is it feasible?
So, the whole reason I wanted to discuss it was to say that I trust our managers, that's why we hire managers. If he says he polled people, I say he polled people.
And who's he? Is that Rory Mattson or Steve?
Or Steve Weary.
But he, and he got this, he, he actually absorbed this project from the previous manager.
But he was the campground manager. Rory Mattson had nothing to do, or was not the campground manager. So that's why I trust the campground manager, he was hired as the campground manager.
And the campground manager asked me to come here tonight and please put a motion on the, on the table so that we could pause this.
Okay.
So I can focus on the five-year rec plan.
But when you said that nobody was polled, I trusted our campground manager.
Did we ever have, did we ever have a public hearing? That is our process.
That wasn't, that wasn't what I was taking exception with. I took exception with that you said that there was nobody polled.
And what I, and I'm telling you right now, what I meant was public hearing.
Sure, sure.
That's our process. It's not going and just talking to people, it's public hearing.
Thank you, sir.
I do have a question though, regardless, um, with Commissioner Johnson being able to say his piece, do we not need to have corrective action?
Well, that's, uh, the question was raised.
Well, that is the corrective action, that he's allowed to.
That he's allowed to speak. Okay, I just wanted to ensure for our records that.
I mean, it, is the, going to change the vote on the second?
I don't know.
I'm not interested in that, I just needed to get my piece out.
Okay.
Thank you for your piece.
Thanks. Thanks for the debate.
Call the question was new for everybody.
So, we move on to number 12. Are you all set then, Nancy?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Nancy.
Yes, thank you. Uh, assignment to Veterans Affairs Committee, one, uh, one commissioner lays on.
So. I always turn mine off, so I always want to make sure it's on. Um, so we just needed one, uh, during everything last meeting, we made appointments for the public and we forgot about the commission. So we just need a commissioner appointment.
Oh, do we have a date and time that these meetings are going to be held yet?
No, we usually leave that up to the committee.
Got it.
Are we leaving it up to the chair or are we, um?
So typically, I believe the chair makes the recommendation and then the board chooses to support it or not. It's a process.
Okay, I will recommend Commissioner Johnson, uh, because he is, uh, the only vet that we have on this board.
Support.
I'll support.
Whoa.
Yeah, it's okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass. Thirteen, streamlining the Board of Commissioner meetings. I think that's.
This is, uh, my request? Correct. Okay. So, I put this on the agenda because, um, over the last, uh, few months, I have been, um, attempting for the public to receive their agenda packets earlier. Um, a lot of times, our board packets are coming via email, um, and there's, you know, a hu, sometimes upwards of a hundred documents, and the public doesn't get enough time to review them to be able to make ample comment on, um, public comment for agenda items. Um, it was, uh, suggested to me that, um, that while our administrative staff does the best that they can to get these agenda packets out in, um, a timely process, sometimes it's inevitable that they're going to come later in the day. And that if people wanted to be, um, more proactive, they could attend committee meetings. And we just had a hiring committee meeting at the airport in which we used the owl, I think it was called, to do our Zoom meetings. So it would be my question that, is that something that we can use at our committee meetings to live-stream committee meetings? And then, second of all, do we have a procedure or a policy in place that we can stream all commissioner meetings, special meetings, additional meetings, committees of the whole, things like that? Because from what I understand, um, there was a specific request made and emailed to all the commissioners requesting that the one FOIA meeting be streamed, and it was not. So I'd just like to see if those two options are available. Number one, streaming for committee meetings, and number two, streaming for all Board of Commissioner meetings.
Um, to answer the owl, so I had borrowed that from outside.
How much does it cost?
I couldn't, uh, say.
Ford, Ford River Township uses an owl, um, for their meetings, and they also have, um, I believe it's two speakers that they attach to the owl. And I think they spent, it was like $2,400 for the actual, um, owl device and then the two speakers.
Because I believe part of the reasoning for, um, some of the special meetings not being, uh, streamed in the past was that there was a change of location and it would be hard to stream from the change of location. So I'm just wondering if we had an owl or some similar setup, if we could then stream all of our meetings and make them more accessible to people? Because our committee meetings, that it was suggested that people go to to be able to receive as much information as possible are held during, um, working hours, and so it's really hard for people to get there, including media. But if most of the decisions are made at the committee level, then I would think that it would be something we would want to do. Maybe we can move this to finance to see if it's possible?
Sure.
May?
We can find out, uh, the rest part, I think there might be something, might want to look at.
I mean, from what I saw, it was easy to set up.
It was easy to set up, being devil's advocate. Um, it was more of a roundtable discussion. I don't know, I've, I've used owls in other meetings, but we've all been participants of that meeting.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know how that would work with having public, so if, like, somebody in the public made a noise, it would focus on them.
It doesn't work that way.
It doesn't?
No. But it's, like, Ford River Township, because they use now for their, all of their meetings, and, um, they have a podium set up, uh, that has a speaker on it, and so when you get up and speak as public, you have to go to that spot and then the owl picks you up and, you know.
It doesn't, like, pick up the audience or any?
It, it, it'll, it spins, well, it does. The, the top camera will spin around and it'll, it'll capture some of the people in the audience, but it's not listening for them because the microphone is right at the board's seats, and so it's not really hearing the audience, it's just hearing what is going on in front of it. It has noise cancellation, you know, but if someone were to, like, yell, then it would, but.
Could I, uh?
It's picked up mainly by noise.
Yeah.
Could we send this maybe to IT to review?
Yeah.
Well, that would be good.
Absolutely.
And then IT sent it to finance? Yeah, that would be better than finance, sure.
Perfect.
I'll make the recommendation that we send this to IT to discuss, um, streaming of all commission meetings and committee meetings.
I'll support it.
Yep.
You're emotionally got support.
I'm sorry, Pat.
No, no, Ashley asked me, she's like, is that what you're going to say?
Yep.
Okay.
We got a motion, support, any more discussion?
I would just say, depending on the outcome of that, we might want to go back to her policy we'd have to look at to be able to, so that would be included, depending on the outcome.
What?
Depending on the outcome of that IT and the finance piece of it.
Uh-huh.
So that it's actually listed afterwards about streaming those. Because I don't think it, there's anything listed currently for those.
Yeah, let's just do, you know, let's not put the cart before the horse, so, yeah, cool.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass. Number 14, out-of-county travel to MAC conference, and I think that is April 4th?
7th.
7th through the 9th.
7th?
Send approval for, um, commission to have out-of-county travel.
Do we normally go to that one? I thought we just went to the one in September.
Go to both of them.
It's optional.
Oh, it's optional.
Well, I think they're all optional.
Yeah, seriously.
Going to be discussed?
So I need a motion?
Make the motion?
Can I get support?
Support.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner, can I have a discussion? I just want to make.
Oh, sure.
So, please notify Board of Commissioner's secretary as soon as possible. The cutoff for hotel reservations is March 7th.
Oh, March 7th.
However, there is no guarantee that there will be rooms available March 7th. So I just wanted to put that out there. Just make sure you, all that and plan on attending. It's a first come, first served basis for the hotels.
And what I understand, everything's going to be at the hotel this time.
That's what it says.
Yeah.
And I'm sure you can read it in your packet, but I just kind of wanted to highlight those. Make sure we get those requests in.
Yeah.
And we'd also like to say that if you're planning to go, please go both days.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Or let us know.
Or let us, or let the.
Then we don't have to reserve, uh, reserve for both nights.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. I don't know if it means anything with the registration, but the rooms are, uh.
Thank you, Ashley.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
There is a one-day rate.
Is there?
Yep.
I could recall.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass. Number fifteen. See web to circuit court abuse neglect clerk position. A request to fill enforced, oh.
Enforcement clerk.
Enforcement clerk.
Okay.
My's are truly.
That's what mine was doing was.
So this is what Prosecutor Wickman was talking about earlier, that they are looking at filling that position beginning, I think she said March, uh.
First.
First, was it March 1st? Okay. I was gonna say 7th in my head. Um, so we're requesting to fill the enforcement clerk position where that is placed.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass. Okay, number twelve, general public comment.
Ashley, did you distribute the, um, that packet to the commissioners?
Which packet? I know they've received some of them. I don't know which ones.
We did?
It's the, um, is it the consulting?
There was, um.
The ADK consulting?
Yes, I saw the ADK.
Um, I believe that went to the advisory board.
It did.
Yep.
Okay. And not the Board of Commissioners.
Yeah.
So there was a podcast that I had.
Yep.
Did that get off to them? So it's on the airport management. I'll just, I'll go over this briefly. So my name's Will Carn and I'm on the airport advisory board. And, um, one of the largest assets the county has is the airport and it's got a huge impact, the community, economic impact for the community. We're in the process of getting a new manager and, um, have gone through several managers in the past. I just want the commissioners to be aware of, um, what's available and the process that we're going through right now and what other options there are. So if at the beginning of the year I had a candidate from the past, um, that was willing to come in, in, uh, take over, take over operations and put a portfolio together to, um, bring in, uh, a new manager and assistant. That person is still available and willing to do the pro rated, uh, three to six month term. So I want to make that option that's out there. And then I, I had a podcast that I found and I would like each of the commissioners to be able to do that and see how important the airport is to the community. It's, it's a 30-minute, uh, podcast, but if you listen to a 15 minutes, I think you're going to get the idea of the importance the airport has to the community. So, the Christopher Hopkins, which was a candidate, he's, he's available, like I said, to do a prorated monthly to, to be. And one of the things is the security and airport safety. Our infrastructure at the airport has been good all along and our management is having that turnover that's up on flag to the FAA in our commercial 139 service. So we have to be very careful that we don't jeopardize that. If we lose it, we probably won't get it back. So, um, I've been in contact with a few, um, different individuals, um, that specialize in aviation. This Christopher Hopkins is one. He's more like a airport developer. He'd come in and give us different options that can be done with airport. There's a lot of little things that we could do. And one of the things is, when I, when I talk to these individuals, the biggest thing is, what do the commissioners think of the airport? What do the, what direction do they want to go with it? What's our master plan? So, um, that being said, the Dr. Jones that put this podcast out, he recommends a service called ADK.
Yep.
So right now what we're doing is.
Can you, can you hold on a second? Do we want to finish listening? It would be up to the board.
I'm okay with that.
All my ministers pass.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Are we setting a precedent?
We, we would be setting a precedence, yes.
Yes, we would.
So, can I just rock it up quick?
You could always talk to us after the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Will.
Yeah.
So what I wanted to do is just take the three options or different options available.
I know.
And where it's.
You're right.
You can talk to us after.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And yeah, I was going to suggest in the future is asking to be on the agenda so that then you have more time.
I didn't realize it was on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
Would it be their department updates? Could he come in there?
He's not a department head.
He's a, no, because he's a, he's not a department head.
As a advisory board.
Yeah.
No.
But we could definitely, you could suggest being on the, um, on the agenda. And, and there's a process for that, but yeah.
Well, we could, we could also put him on the agenda too.
This saves our time. It keeps going and it's getting, it takes longer.
All right, um, how about I just suggest that he be on the next, uh, commission meeting's agenda for.
Why don't we take care of that during commissioners' comments?
Oh, we can do that. This is public comment. You're correct. Yes.
Okay.
I'm talking about our time to get a manager.
No, we don't.
Got it.
Any more general public comment?
Uh, and I'm looking right now, there is no remote, uh, general public comment, uh, available. So there's nobody who has left a message.
Okay. I'll say it one more time. Any more general public comment? Hearing none, hearing none, we go to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Johnson.
Um, yeah, thank you. Um, I do appreciate the debate that we've had. Um, I do know that we want what's best for the county. We might have different ways on how to get to the county, but I appreciate that no matter what side you're on, you do want what's best for the county. So I do appreciate that, everyone.
Uh, I would like to suggest that we add Will Carn to the agenda for the next, uh, board meeting so that he can give us a more thorough update and, um, and provide us with a packet of information. And thank you for a podcast. I love a podcast, so thank you.
Yeah, just like to make sure.
Oh, and I have one other thing.
Yep.
I have one other thing, sorry. I just have to find my papers because I got too many frickin' papers over here. Q pad is, um, is giving a renewable energy academy workshop. Uh, that is on Tuesday, March 11th, 2025, from 2:00 to 5:00 PM at Bay College in room 525. If you are a, you know, a local official, planning commissioner, planning staff, or a planning consultant, um, you know, who helps with planning, this would be very beneficial to you. It is to discuss what the new laws, uh, mean. This is basically, um, you know, PA, PA 233. We're going to come into your backyard and put in whatever we want. Sorry, I'm biased. I don't like it. I like, uh, local authority, uh, for planning. But, um, they're going to discuss these new laws and they're going to discuss, um, ways to explore viable zoning options to help, um, make sure that your community has zoning in place so that it, this, you know, coming, the, this, uh, renewable energy, uh, utility scale, you, you, renewable energy coming in fits within your community. So just, you know, if you can be there, great. Um, March 11th.
Are you all set?
Yep, I'm done.
Okay. Commissioner Kelly?
Sure. Um, so last week I had the privilege of attending the Delta County overdose awareness meeting that was held in Rapid River. It was very well attended. They had a, a packed house. Um, the different organizations that came together were able to hand out, gosh, over a hundred doses of Narcan. They had local law enforcement involved as well as, uh, parents who have lost children to this epidemic of fentanyl. And, um, they had a guest speaker who is a recovering addict and is, uh, dealing with physical, um, physical problems now due to her, um, overdoses. And while it was heartbreaking to hear the stories of those who have lost loved ones, it was nice to see such a public outreach event for, um, this overdose awareness. And they will be holding another, uh, meeting towards the end of the month. So as soon as that comes out on social media, I'll be happy to share it so it can get out into the community. Um, I attended Conservation District. Um, I told them that the county looks forward to moving, uh, looks, looks forward to moving forward together. Um, they have a bra, a busy spring season coming up and like Ms. Laduke had mentioned, they do have their annual tree sale, um, coming in April. Um, and she can sign me up as a volunteer. I loved it last year, so I'm excited to do it again this year. Um, again, the opioid task force is accepting RFPs for, um, settlement funds to be dispersed. Uh, we are taking those applications through March 31st. And as our administrator stated, currently we only have one application. So I did spend most of my morning emailing several different people recommending that they outreach so that we're able to get some more applications in. Um, I attended my first MAC Environmental Agriculture and Tourism Committee. And that was awesome because we talked about Eagle and their materials management program and recycling. So I'm the chair of the Central Upper Peninsula Materials Management Planning Commission now. So I felt that to be a great, uh, meeting. Um, and then I have another one coming up because I was assigned to three boards. Um, the hiring committee is going well for the airport manager. We had three awesome candidates. Um, they all scored within two to three points of each other. So I'm really excited about the potential that we have for our management team, um, coming soon. Um, and in the meantime, our administrator has been handling operations at the airport well. So thank you for doing that. Um, negotiations are starting. I was recently appointed to the negotiation committee and we're starting that with corrections. And I look forward to having a collaborative and cohesive effort moving forward. That's all I have.
Commissioner Johnson.
As, as Commissioner Magninovin had stated, the, uh, there's currently an extension that Corrections had, we're working on their new contract. Today was our, our first sit down with them. Um, I think that was actually very positive, um, in the direction that went. And of course, the, um, both rounds, I guess you could look at for, um, airport, it was obviously screening and then the initial rounds of interviews. I know I'm, am looking forward to the second round of interviews. It's always, it's one of those that, you know, some people may be better via Zoom. Some people are better in person. So it will, it will definitely be interesting to see the, the differences with those individuals. In the podcast that Mr. Carn referenced, um, and I have it, I think I can probably forward it if you guys haven't seen it. Dr. Jones actually has a PhD in airport management. And, um, when he went through, it was, it was pretty amazing how much of those we already aligned with. It's, um, it's definitely, I think, definitely worth your 30 minutes of watching. Um, it, 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 it fits us. The other one, um, let's see here, besides those that we had coming up, um, where was the other one here? I had Dr. Jones in there. Um, the, um, through MSU Extension, there's the local, um, citizen planner course that's coming up. Again, that's, uh, half price, uh, and it's done in Escom, a township. So if you're even interested in learning about planning and zoning, whether you do it in your township or you would like to look at doing it on the county board, um, I definitely encourage you to take the opportunity that's there. First off, it's in our backyard and second, it's half price. The other one is I want to give a, a shout out to fellow member. Um, he's been a mentor for a lot of people in the community. Tom Seelander, he, uh, recently stepped down and retired, um, from search and rescue and ice rescue. Um, I know he's still around with, uh, at least one fire department. I think he's on probably most of the volunteer fire departments. And we will still see him around, especially for rescue task force. Um, his mentorship and knowledge, um, and just that calm, um, when it's all chaos is absolutely amazing. So, um, I for one, um, having been an incident commander a few times when Tom's been around, it's just that calming part that he's around and he will definitely be very missed, uh, uh, among us on the team. So, um, big shout out to him and thank you for your service, Tom.
Nancy?
Um, nothing for me.
Administrator Young?
Uh, yes, I just want to bring up the remote comment. I asked a question and, uh, Brandon had pointed me that we have a, directions on how to leave the remote comment on our website. So if you go to our agendas and minutes tab, um, it will say, if you want to leave a comment on agenda items, call 906-248-8227 and leave a message after the beep. And if you want to leave general public comment, the phone number is 906-428-8226. So that is just one item. And thank you, Commissioner. I know you had reached out to, um, administration.
Yeah.
Regarding that. And then.
I'm just, can I just add one thing to it? Because you brought it up earlier at our meeting this morning.
Right, I know.
And, yeah, and there was a, there's a delay. And, you know, after you had asked about that, I thought about it more and I'm like, oh, I get what you mean. That YouTube, when, so there's a delay from us talking in our meeting right now to it actually being presented on YouTube. And it's about 30 seconds to, to 60 seconds. And it's basically the, it takes a moment to actually, um, you know, get the video and, 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 uh, get it ready for YouTube and then be presented on YouTube. But, you know, people have to leave themselves enough time to call and make these comments because, you know, it's a three minute, you're, you're leaving a three minute phone call. And I want people to know that it's not live, like they're not talking to us live. It's a pre-recorded message. So I just want to make sure that people understand it's pre-recorded and they do need to call and give themselves enough time. And then it'll be played during that period of time.
Yes, thank you for highlighting that. That's after the beep.
Yes. It's pre-recorded.
Right.
Yeah.
And then the other side is, I just want to bring out, um, your voice matters as citizens of Delta County. So as you've heard, we're starting the master plan process in the five-year rec plan. So participation is key from our public. Um, these plans are the blueprints for the community's growth and development, impacting everything from parks and recreation to housing, transportation. So please look out for the surveys that are coming forward. Um, and then other public hearings that we'll be having. So just, you know, pay attention with the planning commission and the parks commission. So I just want to highlight that. Cause we use these as guidance on our decisions forward, so. That's all.
That's all? Okay.
Lot of planning.
Yes. I, uh, was invited to the, um, remodeled, uh, student success building. Uh, that was really amazing. It used to be the old, uh, unemployment office years ago. We went through that, uh, it's, it's a lot, quite a bit bigger and fit quite a few people, or young students, I should say. So I'm looking forward to going back and seeing how everything's going. March 4th, I will be coming back from DC, so I don't think I'll make this, that meeting. So Commissioner Kelly will be taking that one over. Radio, who wants to be on the radio tomorrow?
John, you can come with me. You want to do it?
Yeah, me and you will do it.
Anybody else want to do it?
With somebody else?
I don't care. I'll, I'll do it with you. She can do it with you. You can do it. Doesn't matter.
I have a face for TV, not for radio. I don't care. Whoever wants to go, I'm here.
Looks like me and Kelly's.
Great, John. I'd be happy to do it.
Sorry.
Oh, my heart, okay.
Everybody okay now?
Yes, we're fine.
We gotta have fun, right?
He's, he's got, he's got big shoes to fill. I mean, Steve used to crack us up all the time.
Yeah.
You know, so, good job.
Okay, meeting schedule. Uh, Commissioner meeting March 4th, 25, at 5:15 here at the service center. The next one is 3/18, 25, 5:15 here at the service center. And the third one is, oh boy, April Fool's Day. April 1st, 25, 5:15 right at, uh, service center. 30-day notice of appointments. We got opioid task force.
Yep.
Pathways and jury commission. And at that, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion pass.